All right, welcome everybody to the Wednesday, January eighth, two thousand twenty-five. Meeting of the regular meeting of the Seaside Planning Commission. It's our first of the year, so welcome to everyone. All right, we'll call to order and have a local please.
Commissioner Wen. Commissioner Evans.
President.
Commissioner Lamica.
President.
Commissioner Owens.
President.
Commissioner Dodson.
President.
And Chair Silva.
President. Item number three, after the the seventy-two hour posting deadline, have any items arisen that we need to vote on to add to the agenda? See none, we'll move on to public comment, this is the period of the meeting when anyone in the public may comment on items that are not on tonight's agenda, if so, please come forward. Seeing no one in the auditorium. We will move on to approval of the minutes, I believe we have, is it two? Meeting minutes to approve? Doesn't say which ones we're looking at approving. Yeah, I saw it online as well. Final minutes, we have the minutes for September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. And we have the minutes for November thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. Everybody had an opportunity to review those, and if so, do we have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the set dates.
Second.
All right, second.
Were all of us here for all of those meetings? I'm trying to remember, I think I was.
I was.
I don't remember if I was on the twenty-fifth because look at the I was present, okay, fine. All right, so all in favor?
Aye.
Seemed unopposed unanimously, approval of the minutes is passed. Item six, business items, first one is use permit application, U P twenty twenty-four dash oh six, and architectural review application. A R twenty twenty-four dash oh oh four, Dan Madderston applicant and owner requests a use permit approval for a proposed second story deck to project four foot ten feet. There's four feet, ten inches into the fifteen foot rear setback. And the architectural review approval for the design of the deck. Project is located at ten sixty Amador Avenue in the R M zoning district. Give it to staff.
Thanks for the introduction. Beth Rocha, Senior Planner, reviewing this project with you today, ten sixty Amador is located in between Fremont Boulevard and Terrace. Sonoma is on the downside, and you'll see that referenced in another slide. Some background on this regarding code enforcement actions and stop work orders, starting in March twenty twenty-three, a stop work order was issued regarding a rear yard stair, which was permitted, and then the structure of the deck that we're looking at today over a hot tub that was permitted in the backyard. In between those times in April nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, where the applicant submitted architectural review application, the stair was demolished. On May sixteenth, as part of the review of the site to get a better grasp of what was happening. I went out there with our code enforcement officer for a site visit to get some photos and see things in reality versus planned version. And then fast forward to November seventh, as we were still in incomplete status with this project in terms of getting further details on the proposal. Code enforcement received a call from a neighbor regarding a complaint, substantiated that complaint. And tonight, we're here as elected by the zoning administrator due to some of the issues between the neighbors and the code enforcement issues to bring this project for your consideration tonight. So the use permit that was applied for is for a projection into the rear yard setback of more than three feet, as stated in the intro. The proposal is to project four feet, ten inches into the required fifteen foot rear yard setback. And then architectural review will be looking at scale, colors, materials as related to the existing home and surrounding neighborhood. The project is exempt from SEQA, class three, section fifteen, three oh three E, which includes accessory structures as being exempt, and this one hundred and ten square foot second story deck expansion is considered an accessory structure and is exempt from SEQA. Going on to the site details. I included on the left image, a topo image, although it's easier described with some of the visibility of the topo lines. But essentially, you have gradual from west to east of Amador going slightly uphill towards terrace. And then on the property itself, on this slide to your left highlighted. You, there's a ground level entry garage, and then there's a stairway up to the front door. And the house is two stories, existing structure all the way back. Same exists, the property here and on this other side where it goes down to a single story back here. Backyards are flattened out. As you can see by the topo lines, and then going down to Sonoma, there's a steep hillside. And then it flattens out and Sonoma grade continues down towards, back towards Fremont. This picture on the right shows a little bit clearer where the hot tub, hot tub once was, it is located a little bit closer than what is photo in the photograph now that you see before you. And the deck projection completely covers the hot tub, that's part of the reason for the construction of the deck is to protect the hot tub and the hot tub cover. Site detail, four thousand square feet, a hundred and eight by thirty-seven feet, and there's an existing seventeen hundred square foot residence. Moving on to some specifics of the use permit, in red is where I labeled the rear setback, it was hard to put the entire image on this page, so we're just looking at the rear yard portion. What's labeled that you see, this is off of the existing second floor, is an existing deck. And then the proposed expansion on one side, ten feet. On the other side, twelve feet and eight feet, nine inches in width. The east side setback is observing way more than what's required at five feet, observing ten foot six, same five foot required on the west side, which is fifteen foot plus. And the rear yard setback with the four foot ten projection is at ten foot two. They will be increasing with approval, the deck again by a hundred and ten square feet. And moving on, here was a photo taken during that site visit that I made. Deck measures eight feet, nine inches in height to the floor and an additional four feet to the top of the railing. As you can see, covers the hot tub completely. And you can also notice in this picture, the trim around the house, which will come more into the architectural review portion as it wraps around, separating the floors and then landscaping and screening will come into play as well in architectural review. There are findings required to approve a use permit. The first finding is that the proposed use of the deck is allowed within the zone. And it complies with all other provisions, that is the case for this, the second story deck is considered an accessory structure to the primary residential use, and it complies with all the regulations and with the proposed projection into the rear year setback permitted through use permit approval. The proposed use is consistent with the general plan, there is no specific plan here. The new general plan designation for this is neighborhood general, which allows for anything from single family all the way up to low rise multifamily to three stories or thirty-six feet. Finding three, design, location, size, and operating characteristics of the proposed activity are compatible with the uses in the vicinity, current and future. All characteristics of the second story deck are compatible with the uses in the vicinity as an accessory structure to residential in an area that allows for all types of residential. It could be quite common for these to come up. And then additionally, marking on more of the compatibility, which will also get into an architectural review, is the privacy that obscures some of the views onto the properties by the hedges that are planted on the perimeter of the property. Fourth finding is that the site is physically suitable for the type density and intensity of use being proposed, including access utilities and absence of physical constraints. There's no constraints on this site, it meets the development regulations and the deck is proportional and physically suitable for the site. And the last finding five, granting the permit would not be detrimental to the public interest, health, safety, convenience, or welfare, or material materially injurious to persons, property, or improvements in the vicinity and the zone district in which the property is located. The finding is that granting the use permit and the architectural review approval would not be detrimental to the public interest, health, safety, convenience, welfare, et cetera. It's an accessory structure to single family property. The architectural review slide is pretty brief because it's a very simple design, there although a code enforcement action has been taken regarding the rear deck, there is the benefit of seeing it partially under construction. In terms of what I said earlier, there is the existing deck that exists, they're increasing the size of that proportionally and to be a functional accessory structure to cover the hot tub in the rear yard. The max projection that they could go into in the rear yard, six, they're going four foot ten, so they're not taking full advantage of that, there are no site coverage issues. The front of the home has this design on the panels. This is the chosen color of pine cone path brown to be painted on the deck. And there were still some discussions with the applicant where we can have flexibility in a condition of approval, should the planning commission choose to do that? Or if the applicant here tonight has further clarity about wanting to paint one side solid to minimize reflection versus repeating this pattern of design on the wraparound on the deck, which was said to be pressure treated redwood, and these would be painted plywood panels. And with that, staff recommends approval of both the use permit and the architectural review applications.
Thank you, Beth. Quick question for staff before we open up a comment period. There were, there were a couple of objection letters that were received by staff, and at least one of them was showing some pictures of some other work that appeared to either be not permitted or aesthetically inconsistent with the house, with the neighborhood, whatever, are those prior images that no longer apply, or are there other concerns? There was a picture of like planks creating a shed roof on a side yard and
Right.
and some other things just were a little unusual.
That was, I don't know when that photograph was taken because it was taken by a neighbor. Code enforcement did though issue on November seventh.
And have all the code enforcement issues been addressed?
That is not clear, although in my contact with the applicant, when I became aware of this, because code enforcement has a different timeline. I'll review that quickly for you. First notice, if it was November seventh, you have thirty days. If you don't take action, you receive another thirty days, if you don't take action, you have another fifteen days. I would say it's unusual for the deck as we saw it in the pictures that I provided, which were way more minimal than the ones that were in the complaint or in the letter. That any work continues after the application is filed. I made it clear to the applicant when November seventh came along, I said, Dan, what are you doing? We have to be consistent in our approval, what we're going forward for this to the planning commission is what you have to do. You're not allowed to do anything else, and he communicated understanding of that.
All right, any other questions to staff?
I just need to understand the March third and then the jump to November seventh, so
Right.
March third, it looks like they started the deck on permitted, plus a stairway. And then they took away the stairway, but they didn't take away the deck.
I believe that, because the stairway was permitted in two thousand. So it's hard to tell what prompted that, I believe the building inspector was out there potentially for something else and noticed that. So I think the stair and the deck existed for a long time without complaint from neighbor, so the building inspector on March third issued a stop work order.
But not based on code violations or that wasn't permitted, just?
It was based on the deck that you saw in the photographs of the frame not being permitted. But the stair was permitted, but the stair was since removed.
Deck wasn't permitted. But it wasn't removed like the stairway.
Correct.
Okay, and then come November, so a year and a half later, the deck's still there, as I understand it. And work has begun again on it, is that what I'm understanding?
The application was filed on April nineteenth, so essentially that means you that's your action as a homeowner that you're taking to pause any active code enforcement complaints, because you're taking an action to remedy the complaint. It was though, a neighbor did call in and they noticed that things were being constructed on the site again, so they called in, and that's where code enforcement came back out and said, again, stop. Wait for your permit to be reviewed by the planning commission.
Four feet of rain. In March twenty-three, a stop order was put there for two reasons, one of which was the deck which wasn't permitted. And then fast forward a year and a half, we've got more work going on on the unpermitted deck. Regardless of the April, May thing. And so that's why everything stopped, is that correct?
Sure.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, and I just want to be clear with staff and as well, and this is that's annoying, but that said, we're here to approve a permit application not to act on any of the code violation issues, because that's what code enforcement does.
Exactly.
Okay, so there may be some disrespect perhaps to the process if if an application was submitted on a code which kind of pauses it, but the applicant continued to advance the work before they got the permit issued.
Exactly.
Okay, so and I'm, I get that. The the, I think the bigger concern that I have is if we're addressing this permit application and we were to decide to approve it or deny it or prove it with conditions or whatever else. Are there any other concerns on the property that should be permitted and aren't that are open issues, because the letters from the neighbors seem to suggest that there are more construction projects than just the deck that has now got an application for it.
At most, in the past, there was an code enforcement case regarding two tall of landscaping on the side, still within the front setback, that has since been reduced. There were some issues with a fence being raised higher and aside setback. There's nothing else that would come here. Just like in the photographs, it showed a cover over the deck. Covered deck's not allowed to project, so that's just not going to be allowed moving forward, so some there are some things that have been remedied. And we're here tonight for
And of course, if we are approving something, then they have to go, they're supposed to go through the process of getting the inspections and completing the project according to the plans and having our oversight.
They will be required to do that, the next step after approval, and if no appeal is filed against this, which would go to the city council, then he's able to apply for his building permit, which would need to show essentially the as-built conditions on a set of plans. The colors and materials and design here tonight would need to be consistent, planning is putting on inspections on the building permit phase. And there would be a series of inspections by the building inspection staff.
Thank you.
Can I just ask one more thing?
Yeah, go for it.
Beth, could you go back to your picture of the current deck? Understood on your diagrams, what was the existing deck versus what's being proposed? I just can't picture it on this, could you just kind of
Yeah.
out a little bit?
This portion here is part of the deck, so the the second level stops here, you have an additional, it's over that first story portion.
It's an enclosed deck, that existing part?
It's not enclosed.
It's not?
No, there's just stuff leaned up against it, yeah.
It's open on top, but the downstairs, the downstairs, yeah, the downstairs sticks out further than the upstairs.
And that current deck, is that permitted or not?
That is.
Okay, that's permitted.
Correct.
Thank you. Okay, all right, so at this time, we're going to open the floor to the applicant, if the applicant or applicant representative is here, they're welcome to come forward. And we'll give them three minutes to speak to the to the body and then, and then if there are any questions, we'll ask you to stay there for us to ask questions. Please state your name.
Dan Madderston, the owner. See, with regard to any outstanding issues or further construction, there won't be any, there is none. We took down the landscaping in front, I was confused, I I thought it was the left side, but it was really the right side, and so we took that down. And then we had a thing about the cans, all that's gone, everything that Mister his first name is Mason, I don't know his last name, he's in ten fifty-eight, but he's been quite active and kind of getting in my face and I'm gonna get you kind of thing, which I don't understand why would you run up to my porch and tell me that you're gonna get me, I mean, it's just anyway, but that's the end of my questions, and like I said, no further construction. Four foot rail for safety and no roof, nothing. I, you know, I thought a roof wasn't any big deal, but she advised me that it was a big deal, and so everything that was in violation, I took down immediately, and I'm so glad I did because we had that, that little microburst thing just recently. And that could have been really dangerous, and so I'm all that is down, and I understand now the reasons why you regulate this process, anyway, that's all I have, thank you.
I just have a question for you. What is the proposed railing on the deck? So that was something I was confused by, because the front railing, the front deck, the railing is the plywood, it's painted with the panels, and you have a little bit of the existing rear deck. That side is a painted sort of white and cream, and then the deck changes to the
The brown, right.
So how is, how is the railing and the deck color going to continue, is all going to be the dark brown, or what's?
I'll go back to the white trim, I have no problem with that at all, really, I mean, that was my intention at the beginning. But I went with the brown on all the pressure treated wood because it absorbs the paint and it never really becomes white, it just stays this kind of off brown, white, and you see all the little pardon me, all the little indentures from the pressure treating thing. I tried that and it just didn't work out, so I just went with the brown, it's like, okay, here's the, here is the old house.
Your application can be for either, I'm just, I'm asking what was intended, it, what I understood, I think from there was a color chip at the top and it was, that's the brown? And is that for the, the deck structure and the railing? And is the railing plywood or is it pickets? That's, those, those things weren't clear to me from the application.
The walls of the structure would be plywood, thick plywood's for privacy, and then the top is a two by six cap. That, that runs exactly four feet from, from the bottom of the floor.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right, at this time, we're open the floor to anybody else in the public who wishes to comment, you have three minutes to do so. Not seeing anybody here in the public, and we are not doing are we allowing people to talk, call in on Zoom, or are we are doing that again? Okay, I thought we got rid of that because of all the problems that we had, or that the different councils or bodies were having.
So what we're doing is we're allowing people to comment, but the agenda says that it's not an official way to do it, so it's basically kind of a hybrid where if it works, you can comment, but if it doesn't work, then you're out of luck and you can't comment.
Okay, so I, I was aware that in other jurisdictions are having problems, people not identifying themselves and saying things that were not appropriate, and so the, we thought we were shutting that down, so I misunderstood if that has changed.
Yeah, the council brought it back, so.
Okay, so then you've checked the Zoom and there's nobody who wishes to come. Okay. So in light of that, we are going to close the public comment period, and we will bring it back to this panel to discuss.
Well, I think, I think you, the chair, pointed out something that I agree with him. I'm paraphrasing you, but I'm not sure we have any grounds to reject this at this point. I mean, what would we reject it on the basis of? If we wanted to go that route.
Good point, and I, I mean, I think, I think it's important that we understand that there have been violations in the past that made it influence the conditions that we would put upon any kind of approval. And I think it's important, obviously, that staff manages this closely in light of a history of violations, but I think we have to look at the application on the application's merit. I'll tell you the thing that concerns me the most is I think that solid brown plywood panels on that deck railing are going to look really, really heavy and nasty.
Yeah, I agree.
And so my, my thinking is I don't have a problem with, you know, deck boards being brown, I have a problem with posts being brown, but I think when we look at the white belly band on the building and from there up, I think that that color should match the colors of the house, and I think it would look more compatible, and I think it would frankly be less oppressive looking from the neighbor's point of view.
And we, we can certainly make those suggestions or requirements as part of the overall review.
Yeah, that was my observation, gentlemen. Okay. I thought you were, you were percolating. All right, so my inclination is, is to, if it's okay with everybody, I'll make a motion. I move that we approve it, but I move that we approve that from the belly band of the house where the, the sort of the rim joist of the deck continues that it be painted to match the house from there, and then the railing, the safety railing would be painted to match the house, and it would be compatible with the front porch railing, and other than that I have no issue.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, seeing none, we have a unanimous approval. An appeal to this may be submitted, and if it is, it shall be submitted in writing within seven, seven calendar days of the date of the decision. The appeal shall state the pertinent facts and the basis for the appeal. Appeals are to be addressed to the council and shall be filed with the city clerk, and appeal shall be accompanied by the required filing fees. All right, with that, we are going to move on to the next item of business. B, B, which is Master Sign Program, M S P twenty twenty-four dash zero zero four. Property owner, the Aragon LLC, and applicant Monterey Signs Inc., request approval of a master sign program to allow the creation of three wall signs, a freestanding pylon sign and window signs at the two tenant commercial building located at one three 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 and one three two five Fremont Avenue in the community commercial zoning district.
Good evening, members of the planning commission, my name is Eric Casrell, and I will be presenting this project. This is for a master sign program, it is a two tenant property, which is why it requires a master sign program. It's located at the corner of Hamilton and Fremont Boulevard, outlined here in yellow. And we can see this is really in the heart of our commercial district. We'll get into a little more. Nearby uses are primarily commercial with some residential towards the west. And it is in the community commercial zoning district. The master sign program would allow three new wall signs, window signs, and a freestanding pylon sign, which already exists. The locations are shown here, we have forty feet on this secondary facade, seventy-four feet on the primary facade, and we can see this is going to be the largest wall sign. We'll see in a minute, that's about forty-five square feet maximum, here is the pylon. And then we have entry signs above the main retail entry. This is the largest area facing Hamilton, I will note that this area is not forty-five square feet, this is larger than forty-five square feet, this is to allow them to place a forty-five square foot sign within that space. And we think of this facade as forty feet wide, so it is significantly smaller than this area. And these are the two signs that would be above the entries. Sixteen square feet each. And we can also see some of the existing window signs. We'll get into a little bit. Here is the pylon sign, thirteen and a half feet tall, it does exist. And these are the sign areas. They were included in the staff report, but it comes out to a total of about one hundred and twenty-two square feet. If we compare that to what would be allowed without a master sign program, without a master sign program, they would be allowed one hundred and twelve square feet, so we're going slightly larger. And it does fit the character of the building, it is a large building. So we're going slightly larger. Uh, and it does fit the character of the building. It is a large building. For the materials, they are all standard sign materials that will weather well on the outside. Acrylic inserts with translucent vinyl graphics, aluminum channel letters, vinyl window, window stickers. And for the window signs, uh, the applicant took our window regulations and brought them into the master sign program. So they do mimic the sign code. The project is categorically exempt because this is the creation of on-premise signs for a commercial site. Steph does recommend approval of the master sign program. And that concludes my presentation.
I just have one, Eric. Um, this building seems familiar to me. Wasn't there like a unapproved change to the facade of the, the street facing part? And we had some requirements for them to soften it or something like that, but I.
We also approved the um, the iron fence that goes around it. And, and if you recall, they wanted to have spikes on the top of it and we said no.
Right. I'm just talking about the building itself. I thought we're supposed, we're supposed to have something and I've never seen anything go on.
Was it landscaping? Was it?
I don't remember. That's why I'm asking, Eric.
Something in that little corner where it gets narrow.
Uh, you are correct. And I don't think we can actually see it on this side. Uh, it would be located here on this face. And uh, there was supposed to be a trellis. That was what was approved in the conditions of approval. A trellis or other architectural feature. Uh, it was given, the applicant was given room to bring something to the planning department to break up that facade and make it uh, more pleasant to look at. The applicant had a second application for a use permit, which would have changed that entire facade and put it on hold for a period of over a year. And we are now back at the point of working with the applicant to put that into place.
Good memory.
Well, I also remember, I mean, one of our meetings were question, questions from the committee. I, I asked, are they ever going to complete the signs? And that was well over a year or two ago. So just the fact that we're at this point now is, I think, progress.
Or, or is it?
I guess we have to see it first.
On a new thing, but not progressing on the thing that they did before.
Yeah.
Anything on your end? All right, um, we'll open um, the floor to the applicant. If the applicant is present, they want to um, to come forward. Seeing nobody here unless we have a hand raised online, let us know and okay, and then um, now we'll open it to the public. Oh, we do. Okay, and is John Mata the applicant?
Yes, he is.
Okay, perfect. Let's hear from the applicant.
John Mata, would you like to comment?
Yes, I just wanted to just thank Eric for the great presentation and all you guys for bringing this to, in front of the board and taking a look at it. And we're excited to get some signs on the building. So Ritter King can uh, so they can find Ritter King. And I would have, I would have been there tonight, but uh, I've saved Earth from getting sick. So I'm currently feeling ill.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And I don't think there's any questions of the applicant up here. Okay, okay, moving on. Um, uh, we'll open it to the public. Anyone in the public wishing to speak? Um, nobody here in the auditorium, but if uh, anybody wants to raise their hand, please do so now, or we will close that as well. All right. It doesn't look like we have anybody from the public wishing to speak. So we will close the public comment period and bring it back to the, the panel. Um, any discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the, the master sign. Plan twenty twenty-four dash zero zero four.
Second.
All in five favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, we have a unanimous approval. In, in going back to item six A, I realized that when I made the motion, I did not reference the application numbers, U P twenty twenty-four dash zero zero six and A R twenty twenty-four dash zero zero four. So I'm mentioning those now if we can amend the, or you know, add those to the uh, to the motion just formally. All right. Item number seven, reports from commissioners. You have any reports from commissioners? There was something I, I kept seeing and I was like, I'm going to bring this up next time I'm up there. Oh, I know what it was. On Co Avenue, um, uh, just north of Pacific Crest. Sorry, just east of Pacific Crest. I think it's the second or the third time that I've seen a car has not made the corner and has crashed through some people's backyard fence, destroyed their shed and everything else. And I'm just wondering if, if at some point the city ought to put a ball yard or put some reflective arrows or, you know, slow down or buttons on the ground or something. Because I think, I mean, literally the other day I was driving to work and I saw the, the entire fence was down, the shed was crushed. And I think it's the, I think it's the third time I've seen that happen in the last decade. So it, you know, what happens is, is it's, it's the backyard, but the road makes a curve right there. And I think if somebody is zipping up and there's no street lights and stuff, if somebody's zipping up, comes on that curve too fast, they don't make it. They just jump the curve and go right into the backyard. So just something I think we should maybe look at.
I would add to that, uh, along Co, because I, my whole back's on the Co. In the debt, in the last decade, there's been at least eight accidents along that road. Cause there, it curves enough and then mostly it's Friday nights and Saturday nights when everybody's probably had a few too many.
Well, you know, I, I actually got hit on, on Co a number of years back. But, but what happened is it was when they're coming down Co from Sun Bay Apartments, there's a place where there, they don't have visibility and then all of a sudden they drop in and in, in, you know, the person wasn't speeding ridiculously, but um, the same time and a person was making an unprotected left into our neighborhood and, and wasn't paying attention, was looking at the street name and went in front of this car and the car, you know, we had enough speed and short enough notice, they swerved out of the way and they T-boned me right in the intersection. Um, and, and we were okay, but it was a, you know, there, there is some speed there. I don't know if there's anything we can do to, to create some traffic calming or especially at that curve, just, you know, to protect this poor person's backyard. Man, they keep getting it.
Yeah, the curve I do know is on the radar and Public Works is looking at putting in some sort of guard rail or something like that. I'm assuming it would be reflective because if it's not, that kind of just creates a new problem. As far as the overall safety of the road, um, I'll, I'll mention that to the traffic people and, you know, yeah.
Some people go fast up there and, and it just might be noted, especially since we have so per field and we have parking kids that, you know, maybe there's, maybe there's something that can be. Yeah, I'm, I'm more concerned about that curve though, because people keep missing it. And you're going to have, you know, more houses, they're high-end houses coming in off of that for the, the bayonet black horse property up there at the enclave. And um, you know, I mean, it's, it's, it's a, it's a front door to some of the nicer properties in, in Seaside now. So, you know, let's keep it from looking like a junkyard because things are all chewed up. So, all right. Anything else? All right. Reports from staff.
All right. Three really quick things. First of all, um, you, you may have picked up on this, looking at the staff reports in the presentation, but uh, just letting you know, Eric has been promoted to associate planner. So uh, congratulations to him. Well earned. Um, which means he's now an exempt employee and doesn't get overtime for staying for these meetings. So. Uh, second item, I have not forgotten about the major transit stop and the parking. I'm working on it. Yeah, working on it. So it's on its way. Yeah. And then uh, third, just, this is just an FYI. There's really no action on, on your guys' part that I'm looking for. But uh, a new state law has taken effect, which requires that any zoning code amendments or rezones that could affect someone's property values requires a twenty-day public hearing notice as opposed to a ten-day public hearing notice.
How is that determined? Because anybody can argue it's going to affect their property value.
I'm going to take a pretty uh, broad view of what that means, just to be safe. I mean, there's no, nothing. If you do it unnecessarily, nothing bad happens if you do it too early.
It just adds time to the process.
It just adds more time to the process. And it only applies to the planning commission hearings, not the city council meetings that go along with it. So I, I get the impression that um, it was, it was supported by um, uh, who was it? The real estate people. Um, so I think that, you know, especially if you're looking at like a major amendment, like let's suppose you have a whole zoning district and you're changing the uses that are allowed in that zoning district, could affect hundreds of properties in a city like LA or thousands even. And they probably just wanted more time to be able to analyze it and figure out, well, how is this going to affect my clients kind of thing? It, I, I can understand in a large city why having that additional time would be really important. Or, you know, an owner goes on vacation for two weeks, comes back, ten-day notice, everything could be over if the timing was wrong. So twenty days does give people a little bit more time, but it does slow down the process. And so, you know, sometimes we get these things where someone comes in and in order to make a project work economically, the rezone has to happen very quickly and this will impede our ability to do this as quickly. So, but no action required. There'll be a zoning ordinance update coming through in the next month or two. That will uh, make that change along with a couple of others that state law um, did that'll affect our, our ordinances. Um, so yeah, just a heads up though, that if you see that it notices really early, that's why. Right, only for changes to the code, which includes a rezone. So zoning ordinance amendments and rezones essentially.
And Mr. Evans, you mentioned to me some new law about crosswalks. What was that?
No offense to uh, compliance, but after their presentation at the December meeting about the daylighting thing, it seemed like we were trying to have it every, every way. So as I understood their presentation, if there's a, whether it's a marked crosswalk or not, it's an intersection. Now, question, does that apply to roundabouts? Uh, if it's an intersection, even whether there's a crosswalk or not, the, nobody can park within twenty feet of that crosswalk. Whether it's red curbed or not, or bollards or not, they had a lot of nice things that they were talking about, maybe doing sometime. But on the other hand, I never quite understood whether, like in our neighborhood where we have an HOA, whether we should let our people know. Hey, you know, the law is now a year old and it's starting to be enforced and you might get a fine or whether we should just kind of let the city take care of all that.
My two cents is um, letting people know is certainly going to be helpful. It's going to be very challenging because as you noted, the curbs are not going to be marked in many cases, even though you'll be prohibited from parking there. And it's not clear to me at least, are, are we starting from the backside of the curve or the midpoint or where the, where the sidewalk becomes straight? And who's going to take out a tape measure and go like, oh, shoot, I'm only nineteen and a half feet from which part of the curb? So I think there's going to be a lot of confusion on the um, I'm on the city's uh, traffic advisory committee and we've definitely been having that conversation and encouraging public. It's, Public Works is not going to be able to just, you know, snap their fingers and all the curbs are red. But they're being told from multiple sources that, um, yeah, we need to get these things painted. Just, it's just a good problem.
And that was my next question is whenever you determine what that twenty feet is, not just in our neighborhood, but in any neighborhood. Um, would you enforce a violation or a citation of somebody if it were not painted red? Because you may not get to all the curbs and painting them red. So how is that going to work? Is the city going to start enforcing that? I mean, how would, how would a person who pulls into a space realize that they can't park there unless there's some sort of signage or notification like a painted curb?
To answer your question, yes, it can be enforced. Um, police can issue a parking ticket in that situation. Uh, whether they choose to do so or not, any given situation is, you know, up to the discretion of the officer. Um, and this is exactly why I say by all means, tell everyone you know. And we need to get these things painted red.
It seems to me is that the city would open itself up to a lot of legal uh, issues if they started giving citations. And there was no way for a person knowing that, that that was an area that they can't park in because it's not painted, it's not signed, it's not, you know what I mean?
Yeah, it's a statewide law, so I'm certain at some point it's going to get challenged.
But apparently it's a statewide law that's been in effect for a year and I had never even heard of it.
It only, it was in effect, but enforcement could not begin until the beginning of twenty twenty-five. So we've only had a week.
So did I, I must have missed the December meeting or something because I, that you're talking about. Oh, is the council me?
Yeah.
Yeah, I've never, I've never even heard of it.
I, I think that we're going to see, i- it, it will just depend on how aggressive the police want to be in enforcing it. But if it were to be fully enforced, um, there would be a lot of violations very quickly. I mean, I, I'm, I keep forgetting. So I'm glad you brought it up because I, I keep forgetting myself and I'm not going to be the only one. People are just, you know, they've got years of habits. There's no red curb to remind you and people are just going to do it. And if a police department decides to uh, enforce it aggressively, then there's going to be a lot of very angry people. And I'm sure there's going to be a court challenge for this at some point, if probably sooner rather than later. So just stay tuned, but.
All that said, the risk manager in me says kudos to the law because, you know, the, the whole point is daylighting. And kids in trailers, kids on small bikes, nobody can see them with especially a big truck parked in front of a crosswalk. So I, I, I understand that the, the thought process, we just got to have the red curbs.
Agreed.
All right. Um, you have a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All second. All in favor?
Aye.